I opened this public hearing up for the FY23 Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Information, and we have our grant writer, Jane Daviazi, here, and I'm going to turn it over to her.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, and let me just say, I'm so sorry that I haven't backed you, but at any point, if you have questions, just please let me know, we have to respond.
Excuse me, could you just have the mic over? Thank you.
I think, is it, is it this one, Alex? Once we figure out which one it is?
Neither one's good for the camera.
I was going to say, I don't think that that...
There's nothing for in here, right?
Yeah, there's nothing for in here.
No.
Oh.
That's just for the camera itself.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, there's no audio, there's no speaker on, that's just for the...
Yeah, it's just for the cameras.
And I'll try to speak loudly, too.
That's good, right there.
Okay, good. Because I know I don't have a loud voice, but I will make an effort. Okay, we're here today to talk about the Land Water Conservation Fund Grant, and it's an opportunity that the city has to obtain funding for some park renovations. And this is a list of what we're going to be talking about today. I'm going to give an overview of the grant, the funding opportunity, as well as the timetable for the grant, and we'll talk about some of Fall River's previous and our proposed Land Water Conservation Fund projects. We'll also have an opportunity for people to ask questions and offer comments. The Land Water Conservation Fund is a federal program that the Division of Conservation Services administers on behalf of the National Park Service. That's an agency of the Department of the Interior, and the state agency that manages the program is the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. The grant offers financial assistance to develop new parks, to renovate existing parks, to develop trails in existing conservation and recreation areas, or to acquire parkland or conservation land. So there are two types of projects that applicants can request funding for. The first type is a conservation project whereby we would receive funding to purchase land or to purchase a conservation restriction on land. The other type of conservation project is that land would be under the care and control of the Conservation Commission. I'm sorry, that's not another type, that's just another characteristic of a conservation project, that the land would be under the care and control of the Conservation Commission. Recreation projects offer the opportunity for applicants to receive funding to purchase recreation land, to develop new recreational facilities, to renovate existing parks, and all of the land must be dedicated as parkland for any of those recreation projects. States and local governments are eligible for this funding, and we're going to be talking later about which type of project we're going to be applying for. Eligible project costs, if we were to receive funding, could be, if we were interested in applying for an acquisition project to purchase land, the eligible project cost would be the acquisition cost, which would be based on the purchase price or the appraised value, whichever is less. For renovation and development projects, the funding would be for engineering and design and construction and construction supervision. Those are all eligible project costs if we're doing a renovation or development project. For trail projects, the funding would allow us to develop and mark trails, and then also support features such as creating a trailhead, an overlook, or a turnout. In all cases with this funding, we must have 100% of the total project cost appropriated from the municipal budget, or we go before the city council and ask them to appropriate the 100% of the total project cost, because this is a reimbursement grant, and we can only receive from the state or the federal government 50% of the total project cost. So the state wants to see, and the federal government wants to see, that we have the full amount in hand, because they wouldn't want to fund half a project, that we get through half a project and we run out of money, so they ask that we have 100% of the total project cost allocated or appropriated. The minimum grant request that we could ask for would be $50,000. The maximum grant request is $1 million. As I mentioned, these are called reimbursement grants, and the most that we can request reimbursement for is 50% of the total project cost. And it's actually based on the percent of the grant, the percent that the grant award is of the total project cost. So it remains the same for each reimbursement request. So throughout the period of performance of the grant, we submit requests for reimbursement, and they provide us with 50% of the total cost. This is just an example to kind of illustrate how they calculate what the reimbursement rate will be. If we had a project that the total project cost was $4 million, and we received a $1 million grant award, because that's the max that you can receive, then $1 million is 25% of the total project cost in this example. So therefore, each request for funding is going to be only 25% of the total project cost for each request. So if we submit $1 million worth of invoices, and we're being reimbursed at 25%, then that's $250,000. So that's just an illustration of how it's calculated. When we put together grant applications, we do so by, in response to what the funding source is looking for. There's almost always an evaluation or rating system of some sort. They tell us what they're looking for, they tell us that if you respond to certain elements of this application, you'll receive points, and then when the, all of the applications are reviewed, a point system is assigned, and the applicants, each applicant receives points based on what they've put into their application, or how responsive their application is. So in the case of this particular grant, the Land Water and Conservation Fund grant, these are some of the things that they're looking for. Now, these are, this is a goal, it doesn't mean that in all cases we always will meet every single item, or that we would receive the maximum amount of points in each item or in each category, but this is what our goal is, we're shooting for this, we're trying to hit as many of these points as we can when we're developing our proposal, in hopes that we can get a high rating, because we don't know what the rest of the application field looks like, so we want to be as competitive as we possibly, possibly can, as responsive as we possibly can. So the state staff first are the, look at the, all of the applications, and they rate and rank them according to their system that's described for us in the application package. So the first item that they look at is, is our proposed project relevant to this strange word that's called the SCORP? It stands for the Statewide Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. The state is required to have this plan, and the state's plan has four different goals in mind. The first one is access for underserved populations, and by that, they give examples of, like, teenagers who may not typically use a park facility, so that would be an underserved population, or it could be senior citizens who may not typically use a park, park setting. So that's the first goal, access for underserved populations. The second is to support statewide trails initiatives. The third is to increase availability of water-based recreation, and the fourth is to support creation and renovation of neighborhood parks. So in this case, we would, we would target the first and the fourth goals, access for underserved populations, and then also to support renovation of neighborhood parks. So in our narrative, we will explain how we are meeting that, that particular item for ranking. Also, the second thing we look to do is to show the relevance to what's called the Open Space and Recreation Plan. The city is required to have an Open Space and Recreation Plan, and our Open Space and Recreation Plan has four different goals. The first is to improve the quality of parks and park systems. The second is to continue to enhance the network of greenway facilities. The third is to preserve, protect, and add to the open space assets of the city, and the fourth is to implement the goals, objectives, and actions that are recommended in our Open Space and Recreation Plan. The plan, I believe, is good for a seven-year period. I think ours is going to be expiring and will need to be renewed in, I believe it's So, excuse me. So we will be pointing out which of the goals that we're meeting in our, in our proposed project, how it meets the goals of our Open Space and Recreation Plan. There are several objectives that are under our goals, such as improving maintenance in the parks, improving infrastructure in the parks, and by that, we mean sidewalks, walkways, play areas, addressing the needs that are in the city's ADA Transition Plan. So we also received a few years ago a grant to develop a transition plan for accessibility. A consulting firm came in and they assessed every single municipally-owned property, parks, polling places, the Veterans Center, this building, and they gave us a very elaborate plan, and they prioritized certain things that should take place to make sure that we are meeting ADA compliance, to make sure that our buildings and facilities are accessible to people of varying abilities. So we will be looking to explain how our proposed project fits into the ADA Transition Plan for Lafayette Park, because there is one. So we look at that also, and we pull out some of those elements to make sure that we're addressing, like, walkways that are no longer impassable, or maybe walkways that don't go fully up to some of the park amenities, or maybe there aren't handrails at stair, you know, stairs. So we look at incorporating all of those things into our project. Also, another objective is to address security and safety concerns, and that means, like, installing and improving tree plantings and lighting. And the last objective is to maintain trees and to plant new trees, and we always try to do that, and, and we happen to have our qualified tree warden here, and he may talk a little bit more about that later. We also try to include information about our environmental justice populations, and I'm going to be talking a little bit more in depth about that on the next slide, explaining what that is, in case people aren't familiar with that. We also want to explain how our project is making more recreational opportunities available for our residents. We need to include access for people with disabilities in our project, environmental education, if that's a fit for our project. Climate resiliency is a focus of this year's grant round, the state has told us that. So within the project design, we'll be looking to incorporate some elements of climate resiliency, such as tree planting, which I just mentioned, solar trashcans, permeable surfaces, rain gardens. Those are all elements that will come into play during project design. We also need to explain how we are good stewards of our properties, our parks, our recreation facilities. If possible, we try to include water access. Some parks get, you know, a spray, a spray park feature, or there may be a water feature that's available, like a Britlin Park, there's the, the river there, the Quikashan River. We also try to explain, and we want to look at making sure that the park facility is accessible via different modes of transportation, walking, biking, public transit, so we include that in our project design. And then lastly, overall, the state will be looking at the quality of our project and the quality of our application. And then recommend, recommendations are approved by the state, and then also, it, there's a two-tiered process with this particular grant, because there is federal funding involved. So once the state reviews everything and forwards applications to the National Park Service, they have a review process, and they also make recommendations and give the final approval. Now, I mentioned environmental justice, and I'm just going to read this, this definition just because it'll be more complete that way. "Environmental justice is a goal of the EPA. It is the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people, regardless of race, color, national origin, or income, with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies. It will be achieved when everyone enjoys the same degree of protection from environmental and health hazards, and equal access to the decision-making process, to have a healthy environment in which to live, learn, and work." So our goal is to ensure that our residents, no matter who they are, no matter what their race, color, national origin, that they have the opportunity to weigh in on what's happening in their community, and particularly in their specific neighborhoods. So that's one of the reasons that we have this publicly available meeting. I've tweaked my, what I'm going to say a little bit from what's on the slide. Based on the 2019 census data, and according to the Massachusetts Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Fall River contains one or more neighborhoods that meet the following environmental justice policy criteria of low-income minority and English-language isolation. So according to the, so the environmental justice criteria include an annual median household income that is 65% or less of the statewide annual median household income, that minorities are 40% or more of residents belong to a minority group, fits us into the environmental justice category, and that 25% or more of our households identify as speaking English less than very well. So there's English-language isolation. So Fall River actually meets all three of those state-defined environmental justice This is the grant timetable, the applications are due January 23 at 3:00 PM, so even beyond tonight's meeting, we will still be collecting information from people, people have the opportunity to comment, and we will certainly review all the information that people provide, and I think that we'll have some information shared later with what we've collected so far from people on a survey that was available on the city's website, but the conversation can extend beyond tonight's meeting for sure. The anticipated state grant decision announcement will be in late spring of 2023. As I mentioned, this is like a two-tiered process, so following that, the federal government would make an award announcement in the fall of 2023. And successful applications must have a city council vote before a contract is signed with the grantee. So we have a little bit of time to actually go to the council to get their vote and to appropriate the 100% of the total project cost, but if we receive a grant award, we have to set that process in motion. The project or construction would begin in the spring of 2024, and the project would have to be completed by December 2025. I just wanted to mention some of Fall River's past Land Water Conservation Fund, grant-funded projects, and some of these projects are quite old, as Mr. Denmead knows, so I don't have a whole lot of informa, I have some information on them, but not a whole lot. North Park was a very recent application, and I actually worked on that application back in 2013. The North Park Inclusion Playground was put in with the Land Water Conservation Fund Grant that we got that year. The other parks, as I said, that kind of go back a ways, Bicentennial Park, Ruggerio Tennis Courts, which is now Central Park, the Abbott Court Playground, Griffin Park, So we have talked internally, you know, we've talked with the mayor, we've talked with Mr. Denmead and his staff, we've, we're collecting information from the public, and we actually went out and did a site visit to Lafayette Park to look at the conditions there, to look at the amenities that are there, to look at what appears to be needed there in terms of renovations, and this is what we've come up with so far. We are planning that we would renovate the skate park and the basketball court that are there. We're planning that we would install some lighting and some picnic tables and benches. There are some benches there, but they're not in great shape, and I don't believe there are any picnic tables, I don't believe we saw any picnic tables there. We want to improve accessibility within the park and to the amenities there, for example, a route to the skate park. I don't know if you're, you're probably all familiar with the park, but there's a road that cuts sort of towards, you know, through the middle of the park, but it ends and is very, like, the asphalt is broken up, so if you were in a wheelchair, or if you had difficulty walking, or maybe using a cane, or a walker, or something, you would probably, you would come to that spot in the road, and then you'd have to navigate your way across that, you know, crumpled asphalt to get to where the skate park is. There's also a problem with access to some of the benches that are there, to the ball field, to the playground. We would probably look at installing some wheelchair seating at the sideline areas and the benches near the playground and the ball field. We would also repair some sidewalks, as I just mentioned, and maybe add some ramps or handrails at the stairways. We also think that we, it would be a good idea to remove the old fencing along the park perimeter, which is on the Mason Street side. The fence is in pretty bad shape, and it's collecting plastic bags, and it's collecting some brush, you know, brush-type of plants that are growing through the fence, and it's just kind of unsightly. And we would install new fencing around the baseball field, because if we took that fence down, people might be concerned that balls would be rolling out into the street, even though there's a pretty good distance from the ball field to Mason Street. But by putting a fence around the baseball field, hopefully it would, you know, the balls would be caught there, and they would be going out into Mason Street. We would plant some trees, and we would remove the old backstop, there's a ball field that doesn't look like it's being used at all, but there's a backstop that's rusted and kind of, you know, the fencing is not great, so we would probably take that down, we would take out the old unused splash pad and the tennis court. Those are some of the items that we've talked about so far, and as I said, we can share some information about survey results and what the public has said about each of those elements that I just covered. We certainly would be happy to take questions or comments at this point, and Chris, did you want to, do you want to share this now, is that a good time?
Sure.
Okay.
Let's speak briefly to the, the survey results so far. So I printed this yesterday, right after lunch, there were 28 responses to the survey. We're close to 40 now, so there's been more responses to this point, and I have paper surveys, if anyone hasn't had the opportunity to fill it out. But we asked people to rank, or provide a number rating to the different repair options. You can see here, based off of the results so far...
Chris?
Yes?
The camera's over here.
Okay.
No, it's over here.
Over here.
It's back there.
Mark, over here.
The camera's here, too. Yeah, I don't want to see you in trouble, but...
I don't think that's...
Okay. Try this again.
Try it.
Sorry.
Just want to make sure there's a mic, too. So based off of the results so far, lighting swings in pathways, as well as the benches, seem to be the most popular. Repair requests, the idea of the roadway either being repaired or removed deals with its condition, if it's removed, it removes an impervious surface, helps us gain traction on the environmental impact and land conservation part of the grant, and then also the repair or the removal of the fence. Removing the fence, we think, has the potential to increase access to the park instead of having to find a gate. All of Mason Street is an easy walk into the park versus finding one of those openings. So this is what we've gained so far. Again, the grant application isn't due until January 23, so we'll continue to have the grant survey available, both online and a paper copy, and we can send out that link to any interested members of the public to gain some additional feedback on these different elements.
So...
And we can open to questions.
Questions? Can you just introduce yourself?
Joe Cavalo, Vice President of the Flint Neighborhood Association. So if I heard you correctly, this has to go in by the 23rd of this month?
Yes.
So today's the fifth, 4th? So 19 days, and we're counting just business days? It doesn't, and I'm glad that you've gotten 40, I mean, Carlos is the president of the Flint Neighborhood, and we put the, the survey out, so we're, and we have a meeting this month, but it's the 25th, so that's already beyond, because we were going to, I was going to ask for a bunch of the paper copies.
Sure.
We have elderly people who don't have computers, and that really was something I wanted to address, too, that given the short amount of time, when, when were these even available?
They were just recently available, so the, the timeframes are tight, because the state and the federal government released the grant applications and all of the requirements, and set pretty tight deadlines on these things. I mean, we started talking about the potential of applying for this grant after knowing it was available just during that holiday season, so it's not like we have a huge window of time to develop this.
Right, okay.
Unfortunately.
Okay.
Obviously, public feedback's important, I'm happy to give you, I've got probably 35 copies of the survey there, I'm happy to leave it with you, and if people fill them out, and either they're collected by you or Carlos, I'm happy to meet and pick them up to make sure we get as much public feedback as we can.
So when you talk about the grant becoming available, and the, the federal government and the state government, so the timeframe of that, when, when did we first learn about the availability?
I'm not sure, when did, Jane might know when the, when the packets came out.
To be honest, let me check and see if I might have that date on the...
And while Jane is doing that, so the meeting got posted somewhere on December the 19th, which then, of course, fulfills the timeframe that you're supposed to give these notices out about. Where would I find that?
The posting?
Where would I find the posting?
For this meeting, you mean?
No, for, for December 19th. December 19th, this meeting, or this presentation, I should say...
Was publicized.
Was publicized.
Correct.
Where?
So it was in the, the Favre-Herald News?
Yeah, which, raise your hand if you get the paper. Yeah, I didn't think so.
On the city's web...
That's where all public hearings are required to be published, so that is the route that we have to take whenever we post public hearings. Mike Dion's here, he has a public hearing this evening as well, he posts his public hearing notices in the Herald News, they're posted on the city website, in City Hall...
If someone, at some point, and I'll give you my email address...
Sure.
And tell me where, on the city's website, which is an abomination to try to maneuver through, that notice, I can find it somewhere.
So if you go on the calendar of events, it's posted right there. So as soon as the meeting was scheduled, which it was scheduled by December 19th, that was posted on the city website. If you go right on the homepage, they have all of the city events, upcoming events, and you click on them. So there were two locations on the city website, two agendas, where this hearing was published. The first was this specific public hearing, and it was also published on the Park Board's agenda. So if someone looked at the Park Board's agenda, it also noted that there was a public hearing today at 5:30 for this grant, for Lafayette Park, and that the Park Board meeting would meet subsequent to that public hearing.
So I had, I had emailed the Park Board, maybe a week and a half ago, I'm not even sure exactly when, about... about trying to get more time for people to participate. I mean, Carlos can mention, and I know as well, that the Flint is one of the most heavily populated neighborhoods in the, in the city of Fall River. So 40 is great, you know? And I, and I have to say, that's because of Carlos. I first saw it on The Reporter, the Fall River Reporter. And, and probably gonna bag somebody here. But, so I contacted Dan Aguirre and asked where the questionnaire is. And, and he, he had just gotten it the day before. And then he emailed it to me, I emailed it to Carlos, and that's how we were able to get it out to folks. So, and, and I know that, that state and federal grants, my good friend was the late Al Lima, who was an unbelievable grant writer and urban planner, not that he could ever work for the city of Fall River, but that's a story for another day, that they're tight. Because they wanna see how fast you can go through the hoops.
So I will say one thing, so I have worked, or I no longer work there, but I was working for the Housing Authority and I was the Director of Finance, and I would apply for grants. They come out and they only give you anywhere from 45 to 60 days to get your presentation in and everything needs to be signed off on by all of the people in charge and then it needs to be returned back. You also need the time to plan as well. So honestly, to be completely upfront, I think if there's any issues that you have with timing, it would have to be directly to the people who come out with these grants. Because the city of Fall River, we have no say in how long we have to get everything together. We also don't wanna rush it. So unfortunately, we only got 40 of them, but that's the most that we could get with the timing that we were given. They don't come up with the time themselves.
The other thing to take into consideration too is while Lafayette was selected as the potential location for this grant application, these things weren't just selected out of random. They were, they were selected based off of other public hearings that have taken place for our Open Space and Recreation Plan, taken from the Capital Improvement Plan that was put together by, I'm not remembering the, the group that did the capital improvement plan for the parks, but they identified, they went through all of our parks, identified the top priorities of repairs and different means that needed to be addressed in all of the parks. Again, I think they solicited public feedback during that process as well. The American Disabilities Act and the transition plans, those all have elements that we are using to develop this grant application. So it's not that, you know, these options or ideas were pulled at random. They were, we went through, we've gone through various public processes to understand what needs to be addressed. And the elements that we hope to address with this grant application were identified in those plans.
And look, I couldn't agree more with what you're saying. Yes. I, I totally understand the grant process, believe me. I'm still the president of the Coalition for Responsible Siding of LNG Facilities, for God's sakes, among a whole bunch of other things. So, so I get that. I, I guess what I'm, and this isn't a criticism of anybody, really. However, on the 19th, when the notice was posted on the city's website, Lafayette Park is, is in our neighborhood. We, and this isn't on the Park Board, this is on the current administration, never got a courtesy call to say, guess what? We're applying for a grant for Lafayette Park. And we'd like to let you know, so that given, given the scrunch of time that's available to, to get comments from the public or a whole host of other things, if we had been able to be aware of that, that would have given us some time to get the word out to folks. And, and we didn't get it. And that's, that's a, that's a complaint I have with the administration, not with the Park Board. Or with, or with the planner or, or, you know, the grant writer, none of that, no. But gee, you know? And, and I don't think I would be contradicted to say that the most active neighborhood association in the city of Fall River is the one that I belong to and Carlos is the president of, the Flint Neighborhood Association. We even gave the city money for cameras to the police department. We, we had carnivals. We've had a whole bunch of other moneymakers that we've contributed. We, we give scholarships every year to kids from Durfee and Diamond in Kathy Assad's name. So, you know, it's kind, I don't know, you know, if, if maybe some of you folks can, can let that word get out, that, that we'd like to be notified.
I mean, I wouldn't blame the administration for that. It was a tight turnaround. It's probably something that I should have, you know, made sure happens as well. And moving forward, we'll make sure that when we do these types of programs in specific neighborhoods, that we reach out to those neighborhood associations. So I'm not trying to argue that public input is not important, it's very important. We wanted to do this. It was a shortfall and I apologize that we didn't reach out to you and Carlos and the Neighborhood Association directly.
Thank you.
But we tried to publish it as best we could in the time frame we had.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'm sure it's being recorded now on TV and everything, so I'm sure the administration and everybody else will hear your comments.
Yeah. I'm already on one of those lists.
Just introduce yourself.
Couple of questions and.
Just introduce yourself.
Carlos Caesar, 367 Frost. Couple of questions, couple of concerns I have with the project. I agreed with you that we are, we have limited time to go through the process. Maybe what the city needs to, to take notice is how we, the city are putting those posts, are not reaching out to people. Maybe it's something that the city needs to start considering. 20 years ago, everybody got the paper eight o'clock in the morning at the door. That doesn't happen no more. Not even on, online, they could, they read the papers. So moving forward, and that's an example, how we got notified was by somebody that have a media on, on, on internet. So, but we have to realize too that our neighborhood is the neighborhood that have the most elderly residents in Fall River. We have mills filled with 200 apartments with elderly people. Now, they all are familiar with computers, now they all got the paper. So that's something that I need, the city needs, and that's January. So let's plan for the future, starting in January. How are we gonna start announcing people agendas and stuff like that? Make sure the people got reached with that. Another thing that I would like to say is, our neighborhood, 54 streets, we have 14,000 addresses. Would be a shame that we end up with a survey with 40 people answering. Doesn't make sense to me that we don't reach out at least to 1,000 people. Now, moving, moving forward. I lived on 85 Mason Street for 12 years, since I got here in 1988, Old Way, 12 years after when I purchased my first house, then I moved out. So I, I lived right across from Lafayette Park. I heard about removing the fence on Mason Street. I think that well, because, I don't know, you know, you're familiar with Mason Street. Mason Street in one has sidewalk on one side. The other side has no sidewalk, it's only grass. And the only thing that preventing people from double parking on that street is that fence. Now what we're opening is a reason for people to park on top of the grass and will become another problem for that street.
Just, just to touch on that issue, the thought process, and this is why we wanna have this conversation, is remove the fence. There is a sidewalk inside the fence there that is in bad shape. So we're leveraging resources, additional resources, other funding mechanisms. I think CDA's, the CDA office is looking at funding the repair of that sidewalk. And instead of fencing, we would do a treatment of tree planting along the, along the edge of the road and the start of the sidewalk versus a fence. We're looking at applying for a street tree plant, planting, a tree planting grant through DCR as well that we'd be able to incorporate into Lafayette Park. And then if I can, on the survey, the survey is not a requirement of the grant. The survey was discussed and deployed as a way to gain more feedback from people who can't attend this meeting. So it's not a requirement. I think 40 people, while not sufficient to get, you know, a true understanding of everyone's ideas in the Flint, it's a lot better than the turnout we have here this evening and allows more people to participate. And again, the deadline is not tonight, we still have a few more weeks. And like I said before, I'm willing to meet you in the Flint.
No, I, I mean, I'll, I'll go through the senior center with those applications.
Certainly get more respondents to the survey.
I will get, I mean, we can, we have 60 people eating breakfast at Senior Center two days a week. So I'll be glad to go by with the applications and people fill them up for me. That will be no problem. It's, and I understand that's not a requirement. But since that we looking for the, the, you know, the, the public, I think it's just fair, since we are opening that road, that we can get as much possible. Coming back to the, coming back to the fence, I believe that the sidewalk that you're talking about, it's actually just a walk path, not a sidewalk, because it's, it's at least five or six feet into the curb.
Yes.
Okay, so, so to me, that's not a sidewalk, to me, it's, it's a walking path.
It doesn't have to go back in that same exact location. So I would anticipate that it would move closer to the road, so it becomes more of a dual use. And there is, there is curbing between, between the edge of the road, there's granite curbing there and then the brass inset and then the walkway, so.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just worried because, believe it or not, people walking, animals, they, right now, the way it is, people walking, animals, they walk on the sidewalk and then cross on the opening to get into the park. They actually don't walk along the fence because it's not enough for them to walk along the fence. It's safer to get across from the, the opening fence and cross from the sidewalk there. So what I'm concerning now is that we removing the fence, now people's gonna be parked in, in top of the sidewalk. Now I'm walking my dog, I'm gonna come to the street and then go around the car and go back again. You know what I'm saying? So it's like a safety concern that I have, probably it's just me. But, you know, I mean, I'm just trying to picture the, the fence being removed from, from there and having the cars both ways. If, if this, if the, the street was only one way, I probably not be this much concerned. But because it's parking on one side and it's a two-way street, that's what I, I get more concerned with the remove of the, of the fence. Another thing that I, I believe you, I, you said that you will be removing the basketball court or renewing the basketball court?
What we talked about when we went on the tour to look at the elements of the park is that the basketball court would be moved to the location of the tennis court. So the basketball court would be redone.
Okay.
And fenced in instead of it being open as it is right now. That would open up more room for the skate park.
Yeah, okay. Because believe it or not, it, it's, it's very old, but people still use, especially from the St. Joseph's Apartments and everything over there. So, I mean, for now, it's, it's just the, the few notes that I have. And, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm looking for, it's just like my vice president said, it's, it, it's, because we have so much active neighborhood that we actually have a board with seven members that meets every Wednesday, every last Wednesday of every month. We try to bring guests every month. I think it's a concern that we, we don't have at least a courtesy call, you know? Don't even have to be me, I have seven people on the board. Somebody on the board got a call and said, you know, we are moving forward, we're having this plan and, you know, we need to reach out to people. And they'd only contacted me every two years to reach out to people. After that, no more.
I take responsibility for that.
No, I, I think, I, I think you, I think you've been too nice and I appreciate, and I appreciate. But I, I think that really we say, the captain, that every ship has a captain and the captain, it's always responsible for the ship, so. With that being said, I think that's, that's all the notes I have. Thank you again for your attention and, and thank you guys. I know every board deserves appreciation because we all volunteers, we all like, love the city and we all work for the same thing, to benefit the city, so. Thank you for the board.
Anybody else? The commissioners, have any questions? I had just, it said about the removal of the backstop and that, we're replacing that backstop?
No, I think that one would, would just come down. It doesn't, I don't believe that that.
There are two leagues that.
Okay, well, we can.
There is two leagues that.
We'll follow up with, with them.
Dumont Field there, their traveling team.
That's what I get.
It's the, the backstop that we're talking about is the one near the parking lot at the corner of County and Mason.
Okay, it's not, it's not the senior field?
No.
Okay, okay, okay. All right.
That, it, there's no playing field left there, it's an old backstop, so.
And the other concern I had is, I know we gave approval a few months back for, I think it was Sneakin' McDonald, they just did fundraises that they were gonna do like a dedication and so.
That's right.
It'd be kinda weird to put a dedication in on a baseball field. All right, anything else? Okay, I close this public, before I close this public hearing, I just wanna introduce the commissioners, if they can interest you for the record for this public record, just so we, everybody knows who we are, the Park Board.
Amber Burns.
Victor Barrios, Joseph De Silva. And we had Cheryl taking our minutes tonight. I'm gonna close this public hearing at 6:18. We'll be starting the Park Board meeting room. I call this regular meeting of the Park Board commissioners. Wednesday, January 4th, 2023, here at Governor's Center, hearing room. This meeting is being, nearly being. Grant writers' presentation. Citizen, Mr. Schmiede, by the Park Board, be filed noon, 1/4/23. We don't get any citizens, all right? I'm gonna read the open meeting law. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make any audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any meetings. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Will call commissioners.
Amber Burns.
Victor Barrios.
Joseph De Silva, Commissioner De Silva and Commissioner Ray. Joseph De Silva, Commissioner Sylvia, and Commissioner, uh, Rego of Old Axleton. Citizen input, there is no citizen input. New business, election of offices, big nominations for chairman. I nominate Joseph, uh, Silva for, uh, chair.
Second.
I accept. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nominations for vice chairman.
I nominate Victor Ferraris.
I second it. All accept. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nominations of secretary. I nominate Amber Burns for secretary. I second it.
I accept.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations for two thousand twenty-three. Right right up to hold a public hearing, presentation information. We just heard that, uh, place this on file for the record. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to place on file.
Second in entry.
Commissioner Burns made that motion, seconded by Commissioner Ferraris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item C, award, uh, bid award for the July fourth fireworks display, two thousand twenty-three. Make a motion to accept it.
For which one are we?
Um, give me one second.
There's two.
You have any questions on that, Commissioner?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner, I mean, uh, you said, then we will, uh, for one of the-
You have a suggestion?
We have a suggestion, is, um, you can see the two vendors that bid on this, and, uh, one of them is the one we were looking to go to was, uh, that offered more fireworks, and they're using a local vendor for, with their barge. And, uh, they, under a pass, um, we used them for multiple years, was, um, Pyrotechnico. So he was the one that, uh, we would decide to go to. They were both great vendors, and, uh, the, the other one that we used, uh, came in and helped us out when we, uh, came up short on the, uh, fireworks company. But it was, uh, the local vendor, and using, uh, more of the money that we're spending on the fireworks, on actual fireworks rather than barge, we decided to, uh, this would be the preferred vendor to use.
Um, I make a motion to accept the bid, um, or award the bid to Pyrotechnico Fireworks, Inc., out of Jackson, Minnesota.
Second that motion.
Commissioner Burns made that motion, seconded by Commissioner Ferraris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item D, bid award, replacement of the ball field lighting at Meepwood Park, Bay Brook Field, Stafford Road.
Yes, and, uh, with this, this was a rebid. The first bid that went out was, uh, it came back, it was very few, uh, vendors bid on it. And, uh, this one was suggested, and, uh, we agree, uh, to go with, uh, Island Lighting and Power Systems Incorporated. So, um, they came up with the, uh, they preferred, uh, they would come up as the preferred vendor.
You have a motion to accept this, uh, and award this contract?
I make a motion to award the bid to Island Lighting and Power Systems, Inc., out of Norfolk, Mass.
So, uh, second that motion.
Commissioner Burns made that motion, seconded by Commissioner Ferraris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item E, uh, Park Board support, uh, letter of the Park Board's support to submit an application to the Community Preservation Committee for the funding to complete the repair and restoration of the gates at North Burial Grounds, North Main Street, just a far hours ago.
Hello, everyone. So, uh, we intend to submit a funding application. Um, it's gone through eligibility already, um, to complete the gatehouse project that was already been started at North Burial Ground, um, due to rising construction costs and just the overall condition of the building. When we were doing that, we did have a shortfall in available, available funding, so we're, we're submitting an application to fill out the remaining necessary funding to finish the, uh, pedestrian gate and the vehicular gate on North Main Street. Um, so that way, that will be done as well as the exterior of the gatehouse. So I'm just looking for a letter of support to submit with the application.
I make a motion to submit a letter of support.
Commissioner Burns made that motion, do I have a second?
Second, ma'am.
Seconded by Commissioner Ferraris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Perron, if you can, just have a seat, one second.
I know we, I, I had asked, uh, before the holidays, and then after, we've had to ask. Any updates on cemetery projects?
Yes.
So that we public know.
So the expansion is just about done. Um, in the spring, we have to repour a couple of the walkways that didn't come out too well just because of the weather, um, before Thanksgiving, so those will be, um, replaced. The obelisks are in, the niche wall is in, and all the tree planting and grass seed and plantings are done. So with the exception of those, those few sidewalks that will be done in the spring, the expansion is done. We've been selling lots and, uh, performing burials in that space, so.
My wife, I love some, it looks nice here.
Does that report put us over budget?
No, we are under budget. Not on time, unfortunately, just because of COVID, uh, supply chain issues. But, um, considering the COVID issues, being under budget is huge, so, um, we'll be under budget by a couple thousand dollars when it's all said and done.
And then, um, just wanted, uh, I know I, I told Mr. Perron, uh, Spronk, and he said, yes, it was done. Concern I had was, and we sent it out to bid, uh, the local street gates have been repaired.
Oh, yes.
That have crashed. So that is, uh, back to original status.
And the master plan is underway, we've done GIS mapping, um, we're working through that process, and then we'll schedule another public hearing, um, to get some feedback on the cemetery master plan.
Please make sure you-
Yes.
Anything on trees?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner inquiries. Hey, just wanna welcome back Commissioner Burns to the Park Board. Glad to have you back.
Glad to be back.
And I wanna, uh, send well wishes to, uh, to Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Rego, who's feeling under the weather today, and Commissioner Sylvia, who's, uh, been feeling, uh, a little under the weather for a little bit, so we wish them both, uh, speedy recoveries. And Happy New Year's to everybody. Uh, I wanna thank Cheryl for taking on minutes today for last minute notice. And, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Ferraris made that motion, seconded by Commissioner Burns, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Needing adjourn.